This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Springfield Township. We begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and we ask that everybody join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands: One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All. Mrs. Price, will you call the roll?
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Delorel.
Here.
We have an agenda that we normally jump into of business items and in view of the attendance this evening, since we have quite a few people, instead of waiting, requiring everybody to wait through a business meeting, I think it'd be appropriate to begin with public comment if there are people here to speak to us that we're here to listen. Do you have matters to bring before the board?
We've been talking about the trolley track that you want to open up by my home and extend it from Sanitarium Road to past our farm. And I can't figure out for the life of me how Ohio Edison okayed something like this with the power that is above their heads. And 30 years ago, I was out the end of my property. Evening was coming, so I headed toward the house where I was standing. I had my foot up on my fence, got about 10 feet and I heard a snap. One of the cave, one of the power lines snapped, whipped around where I was standing, was sparking. So I went in the house to call the Ohio Edison. I got to the breezeway, made a left to go to the kitchen, which is about 20 feet. All of a sudden, power grabbed me. I had to run. It literally pulled me, my feet were running. My kids and my wife were watching, trying to figure out what's going on. I got to the kitchen, all of a sudden it just released me. But during that release, our TV blew, our stove blew, our telephone blew, and other appliances blew up. What had happened is that one of the transformers on one of these power lines exploded and it surged the ground, to the ground wire, to the ground. I went the next day after I went to my dad, called the Ohio Edison, had four trucks out there all night fixing this transformer and wire cable. So when they left that morning, I went out, I followed that guideline. I looked down around the ground and it had burnt the ground, the topsoil, to a melted lava. So I thought I'd bring some of that lava with me. I brought, I cut out years ago, put it in a jiffy jar. And this is what we're dealing with. This is what the ground effect will be. So if you're on your bicycle, you're with your family on the tow path and that wire gives, you see what you're going to turn into. That's why for the life of me, for 50 years I've lived there, 50 years I've talked to the Ohio Edison, they did not want anybody on that tow path, they call it. Well, I call it the trolley. And now, the second part, now we know the danger of it, the safety. When that tow path was open years ago, 40, 50 years ago, there were no gates. My house, one day I came home, my basement door had been kicked in. I don't know what they were looking for, I was only making the dollar seventy-five an hour, so I didn't have anything down there. One day I went, got home, lunchtime, two guys were sitting on my back stoop with rifles. I opened the door, "What are you guys doing?" "We're hunting." "Well, what are you doing here? You're not allowed to hunt." He said, "We're just sitting here resting." I said, "We'll leave." Which way did I leave? Down the trolley. Two o'clock in the morning, my dogs are barking. I look out my driveway, the moon was out, the guy's running down my driveway. I got my .22, went out to the back door, met him, put a gun to his head, asked him what he was doing on my property. He said he was running from the police. I ended up knowing the kid. I said, "We just keep running, don't ever come down my driveway again." Which way did he go? Down the trolley. Over the years, we've had four field fires, hayfield fires caught on fire. We don't know what happened, down the trolley they go. One day I counted over 30 motorcycles on the property in the back. One girl broke her arm, so I said, "It's gotta stop." So I put a fence up, neighbors put a fence up, a gate, and it seemed to slow it down quite a bit. In fact, we used to have the police, you probably go back to your records, how many times they went down the trolley looking for criminals? Especially the welcome in, they used to escape down my driveway, down the trolley. Once they hit the trolley, you're not going to get them. You know, you can say you can patrol it all you want, but when you've got wooded areas, they had to scatter. I remember chasing kids from the high school supposed to be in school, using the trolley to get away. The neighbor down the street on the trolley, he's out with his wife, I don't know the couple, they were out there swaying a golf club. Here's four-wheelers on the other side of the trolley, wrapping up in their field. So they go down, they tell them, "You're not allowed here." Well, they took the golf club to him and beat him and told him, "This is the day you're going to die." I don't know if you remember this or not. So this is what we're dealing with. The sad part is, I don't have a problem with people. Ninety-nine percent of the people in Springfield Lake more hardworking people, but that 1% we have to deal with. Now, my problem is, the things I had to go through over the years, snowmobiles in my yard, four-wheelers going through the fields, devil worshipers, we even had devil worshipers in the back of the farm. They go from the trolley, I found six big rocks in a circle and a big one in the middle with the devil's cross on it. So I scattered those, got those out of there. Beer cans, we had the roof of the barn shot twice. Behind my house is the garage, cars in it. They broke in, broke the windows, stole parts off it, stole the plumbing and the electric out of the garage. So this is what we're dealing with, the bad people. The 99% know, but there's that 1% and we can't control it. And I have to do what I have to do to protect my family and my home, because I'm not 22 anymore, I'm almost 70. I don't tolerate with my fist anymore. It's not going to happen. Because when I walk the farm, I still carry a pistol with me when I walk in through the paths of the farm. But I guarantee, when that opens up, there will be trouble. And you can patrol with Ranger Rex all you want, he's not going to catch him. I've seen it. There used to be fistfights in the trolley, behind the plaza. Drugs. I mean, it's an open invitation. You are opening up a Pandora's Box. And the problem is, you can't stop it. You can say you can stop it, but the police, mind it, use the police on Killian and 619 and straighten up Arlington Street and clean that up, gee, many Christmas. By the time I read the leader, there's five or six things happening on, in Arlington Street. You know, if you want to help the public, instead, if you want to help the public, give us a break on our taxes. We don't need, once this is open, it will cost me more money, because I have to put a fence up to have a pond. Those kids would be drawn to that pond like that. I had people, one time, I hear a gunshot. Two kids, teenagers under my car, shooting rabbits. I went out there, "What are you doing?" "Well, we're tired of fishing." "You're not supposed to be fishing." So now we've got it calm. So I thought, well, I've got maybe 10 years to go, I'm retired, and I thought, I can relax a little bit, but not now. We're going to open this tow path up and all hell's going to break. And the problem is, wait a minute. And now we're talking about the people on the tow path who own property. I knew a long time ago, Ohio Edison had to ride away to there. There was no talk about a path for people to walk and ride their bikes. And now you are. Now you're going to go through people's front yards, divide that up. I think Mrs. Kearns here, you're going to take her business and knock some of that out, which is an excellent business. You have to, it beats the welcome in. And then we're worried about how we're going to cross over. I even offered you my home, to buy my house and go right up the trolley, right to the bog. And I don't know where you got the name bog. It's like a 1950 horror flick. Somebody says, "Where are you going? I'm going to take a walk on the bog." You know, come on.
Okay.
Hold on a minute.
Now, I know there may be other people that want to speak, so you know...
Well, I don't think so. They weren't, nobody's here.
Everybody has a chance to speak.
Okay.
But I want to try to confine it so that people get an opportunity.
Okay, one more thing.
Some public bodies give you three minutes and then they shut you off.
Well, I figure I've been here 50 years.
We've tried not to do that. I just ask that everybody be succinct and to the point.
Well, the liability on this contract, do you know who's liable for this? Anybody gets hurt? The man who signed it. You know what I'm saying? I mean, anything happens to my property, the person who signed this contract will have to suffer what they have to suffer, tax-wise, insurance, or whatever. So I just want to make sure you understand, when this is opened up, which I'm sure it's going to open up, because it always, trustees get what they want, they always have. So let's think a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I want to respond somewhat to what you had to say, Dave. The first question you ask is, why would Ohio Edison participate in that? Why would Ohio Edison permit it? And the answer is, if you look across all, all across Ohio, Ohio Edison is a partner in the development of recreational trails. And the reason is that recreational trails are positive things for communities. It increases the value of property adjacent, it increases the value of the community as a general, it promotes good health, it, open recreational opportunities are good things for people. And that's why Ohio Edison has been positive, we're not the only community that they have been a partner in agreeing to an easement for recreational purposes. Now, I know you've described things that have occurred over the years in a situation where the trail is shut off. Really, what you argue for is opening up the trail, because if the trail is open, then the good people, the 99% of the people in our community, begin to use the trail. And if you look at trails in other communities, you have families using the trail, you have people pushing strollers, and everybody in this day and age has a cellphone. And there's less likely to be criminal acts, because wrongful activity comes immediately to our police attention, because people are on their phone identifying a problem. I mean, if you tell me that you've had these isolated things, we've never opened the trail and we have those kind of problems, opening up the trail is going to give an influx of people that are decent people, the people you're talking about, the 99% of the people will begin to use the trail. Now, we're not ready at this point to do it, but when you make those arguments, I really, I really think you're arguing the wrong side of the issue.
Well, I look at it this way, 89% of people in Springfield do not use that any trail. 1% uses the trail.
Have you ever been out to our lakefront trail?
I've been there and I've been to the bog and the place on Killian Road, nobody's there, I didn't want to type this thing in.
I disagree with you. I live right next to the bog trail, people are out there all the time. And when they, as the colors develop into the fall, we see more and more people there.
So why don't we have enough? We've got the bog, we've got Springfield there, and we got the other one, the kitchen. Why don't we have to take more and more and more to disrupt more and more people's properties?
Because the development of the trail going someplace, the people down at that end of the township should be able to get on the trail and come all the way to the lakefront. It's an asset that ultimately is going to be used. It has to be used.
Well, I know you are, but what I'm curious, how are you going to protect my pond from somebody drowning in it, a little kid running? Now, I'm liable, you're putting all this label on me, which I'm going to transport back to this place. This is what I mean. I don't think you're thinking it, because that one part of the farm, you will walk directly underneath those power lines, not 30 feet away, not 15 feet, you'll be direct underneath there, and then you'll cut through my brother's front yard. It's like, you know, I understand...
Wait, 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 Dave, let's not, nobody will cut through his front yard if they're on the trail. That trail has never been, it existed way before he built, before he built his house. The trail always existed there. He chose to build a house 40 feet from the trail.
Yeah, because then they're going to... So the trail's going? Nobody knew about this trail 25 years ago. But the idea is, is to just keep taking and taking and taking. If you want to help the society, drop some of the property tax, that'd help everybody.
If, it's my belief, the more opportunities we give for people to make Springfield an attractive place to live, the more likely that you're going to have a strong tax base and there are more people here to share our burden in the taxes.
That sounds good to me, more taxes. That's my property, you go with it.
No, I said to share the burden. That's why the one thing that we...
Will you share my burden?
The one reason that we've tried to encourage economic development in particular areas so that there is burden taken away from the residential property. Who else has something? Do you want to, you step to the microphone and indicate your name and where you reside?
My name is Sue Faverell. I live on Myersville Road. And I went the other night and hiked the trail. First of all, it is not well-maintained, it's not mowed, the grass is this high. Very, very few people are walking that trail. There is no trail. Maybe a couple bicycles went down through there, it's not, the bog has a lot of people walking there. And you can tell, because there's a path. There's no path down through where I walked. And the only time that it was a nice trail to walk was when I was walking in people's backyards. And I don't feel comfortable walking through someone's backyard. I don't want people walking through my backyard. I don't think you want them walking through your farm, do you?
Well, I think ultimately that's going to happen. When, if the trail is connected to the bog, then it's going to come, it's got to come across our farm.
Why do we need to connect to the bog? Just to get the Metro Parks money?
Well, you know, you're arguing that the trail isn't well enough developed.
It's not. It's not a nice trail.
Because there, we've never really, quote, "opened it up." And once we open it up, it'll be better maintained. So I hear you saying, "We should maintain it better."
Right. It's not mowed. It's not, it's not a nice place to hike either. Like I said, I don't want anybody walking through my backyard. And I'm sure those people, I was not comfortable at all. Well, I'm walking along a trail and here's a couple reclining chairs out in their backyard. Like, they sit there and enjoy their view, and here I am, walking through their yard. That's just, that's not, that's not a good place to have a trail.
That's the situation in many communities where a trail goes through.
I hike a lot of trails. I don't go through people's backyards. I do the Metro Parks every year. I do the hiking spree. I hike a lot. And trails don't typically go through people's backyards, let alone go in front of their houses. I don't care to hike that type of a trail.
This trail doesn't go through anybody's backyard. There are homes...
Just because there's an easement there does not mean...
The easement has been there since 1900.
Right, I know. I know the whole story. I've been here for a long time too. I'm right across, I used to be right across the field from you. I'm Charlie's daughter, Sue.
Okay.
So I know the whole story of the trolley tracks. And I agree with Dave, all the issues of the dirt bikes, the four-wheelers, the people back there shooting nonstop, five, six hours a day, it's ridiculous. It's not a good place to hike.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt Gray House, and I live at 2388 Canton Road. I bought it in 16. I knew nothing about trails till last week. How come I didn't get anything in the mail about it? Now, I'm a hiker, Appalachian, I'm all for trails. Apparently, it's going to go through my front yard, but I can't verify it. I can't see it on your website, nothing. And if it is going through my front yard, which is next to Kearns, I'm on my sixth mailbox. And it's dangerous there. I'm on sixth, in six years, every year, it's smashed. They go by sixty. So I recommend not Canton Road, on the corner of Canton and Maple, it's dangerous. That's all I can say. I mean, I walk to the restaurant, and you gotta really be careful, because they're flying. And that's, I still don't have any info. Wouldn't I get that in the mail?
Well, first of all, we haven't opened it up yet. That's what I keep saying, is...
Okay.
And that's why there isn't any evidence there in the grass toward the front of your property. But if you did a title exam when you purchased your property, it would have exhibited the fact that an easement exists in favor of the township through that area. There's an easement that has existed since 1900 at least.
Yeah, I probably didn't read that, but I'm just concerned of the people on that road, walking next to it. Like I said, six mailboxes in six years, so...
But that, that's because of the traffic on Canton Road?
Yeah. And it comes around a bend, and in the winter, there's tire tracks way 10 feet. So just be careful.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Catherine Morrison, Killian Road. First, I want to say, I think this is ridiculous. You've had since 2014 to develop that trail over in the sections that you are not maintaining presently, and yet you're going to waste more taxpayer dollars to fund going through further where you don't maintain. Nobody uses it. Nobody uses the one on Killian Road, because it's just down the street from me. The only thing they use is the lakefront and the bog. So why not just develop the lakefront where people go?
I think we've done that.
Well, you could always do more, but people are not going to use this trail. Number two, I contacted you and you and you about the sale of the property on Pressler. You never responded, you never responded, and you only responded after my second attempt and didn't know what I was talking about when I asked you how much the property sold for. So, let's look at this. We bought it in 1996 while you were on the board, and we paid $145,000 for it.
No, they bought it before I was on the board, Catherine.
Okay. And then we just sold it, are you all ready? Five acres, we sold five acres for $95,000 that we paid $145,000 for. That's what these people are doing. Do we want them running a trail behind us? Sorry, that one and that one and that one need to go, because the only one that answered me was Kelly.
By the way, I voted against selling it. I was not on the board when it was bought, and I voted against selling.
I might come in late, my name's Michelle Moir, I live on West Parkway. I just wondered, you're talking about connecting the lakefront with the bog, so is property being purchased to make this happen?
Not at this point, no.
Well, there have to be, you said it'll go through your property.
Well, they're saying, they're talking about, do I want it through my property? Well, if, if we're going to connect it to the bog, I can't think of how it would get there without doing that.
So you're not purchasing any property?
No, no.
But the only property that would have to use is yours, your own personal property to go to the bog?
Maybe it could be connected down Nightover Road, there's other ways. We're far away from that at this point.
But at this point, at this point, you don't have to purchase any property?
No.
At this point, it's all easement from property that's already owned by Ohio Edison?
Yeah, we don't have to purchase...
And then if the trail isn't good right now to use as a trail, what are your plans to make it into a viable, multipurpose trail for everybody?
Well, in order that everybody enjoy it, we've already begun the process of looking at the sections that run from the lake to Sanitarium Road. And the piece that went through Waterworks Park, we improved. And so somebody that wants to see what a trail should look like could look at what we did going from Sanitarium Road...
So your plan is to make it the way that is?
Yeah.
Because I do use it.
That would be the, that would be the plan.
To be wide, paved, mowed on both sides?
Right.
Or stone, like what they have down in the valley?
Correct.
So it's not always going to be grass that's high, because obviously this is a plan in development, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And so, we haven't opened it up yet. I think people are premature here.
Okay.
Okay, John Chapman, 2300 Kent Road, 1724 A Street, 3085 Maple Drive.
You live at all three?
Well, those are my addresses. Dan, you know the story. I'm more concerned about safety here. Who's going to patrol this thing? Where's the money coming from? I'm surprised DLR's not here. Dan Lyon Rice. Bruce Killian and I went to a meeting, it's got to be 20 years ago, at the Springfield Lake roller rink. We were sitting right next to each other, and Rice was there, or he wasn't there, he sent some girl, that poor girl came there and explained this, and they had the maps. I was surprised the maps aren't here tonight. And she explained all this, I'm going, "This is going to go right through our place." And I called that bastard the next morning. There was no meeting. He lied to me. So Dan Lyon Rice, I wish he was here tonight, because he is, he's terrible. And I'm sure he's making $120,000, $30,000 a year. And I'm sure he's making $120,000, $30,000 a year working for the county or whatever, I don't know if it's Metro Parks or whatever, but that guy's gotta go. I'm more concerned about the policing. The police don't have time to work on this project. They're on Arlington Street all the time. I mean, my constituents are calling me, asking me, where are the police? I called the police. At, at least the chief has sent them to start ticketing people on Canton Road. But usually, they're on, they're on Arlington Street. I've called the dispatcher, I don't call 911, I call the regular number. And the girl, the first girl, she laughed when I told her what was going on. Could you break him away from Arlington Street? And then I called another time, the dispatcher hung up on me. I told the chief that. It's gotten better, but still, we need police enforcement on Haynes Road, which needs re, rebuilt. It's a disaster. And you know it is. I mean, i- this is ridiculous. I'm sick of the outrageous taxes we're paying. And that Springfield Township taxes are one of the highest in the county. I think we're like 92 mils now, I, I have to look again. I'm more concerned about the safety. And who's gonna maintain all this stuff? They can't do it now. I mean, it's ridiculous. The taxes going, we're going into depression. That's where we're going to now. Under Biden's administration, we're gonna be in a depression in six months. And Jamie Dimon just came out and said this, and he's right on target. I know he is. So we need to start conserving. Another issue I'd like to talk about tonight also is public buildings. They need to lower the temperature down to 65 or less in the wintertime and 75 in the summertime for the air conditioning. We gotta start conserving our monies. Right, Joe? People in Springfield Township, they don't have time to go on a bike trail and, and walking. They're too busy working to pay these outrageous taxes. And if this goes through, there'll be no more levies. You're not gonna get, the Springfield Schools is gonna be lucky to get this one passed. We have friends that live in Stone, Monroe. The bike trail's right behind their house, they've been broken into several times. And you can look at the Stone Police Reports. And who's gonna be using this, the bike pass? Pete tells me, he comes down to the lake. And there's not Springfield Township people here walking around. It's, it's from all over the place, right? But it's mostly from out of this area. But the crime, I mean, I've chased them off so many times. I mean, it's just ridiculous. People have left my, the gates open for the cows to get out, and, and I've had to call the, the Dan or Jess Danner, cuz caught a guy down there. He'd walk right through, he came right down the trolley car tracks and cut through, and he left the gate open. Luckily, they didn't get out, but we caught the guy. And he says, well, I didn't know what was going on. Those are ferocious, those with their horns. It was hilarious. But Jess took care of that. So I got a real problem with this. So I think this is, if this goes through, and I, I wish Dan Lyon Rice was here to explain this. And I'd like Bruce Killian to be here, cuz he was, they met him with me. He couldn't believe it. Okay?
Yep. First, I, I do, I do have to comment. I, I think it's inappropriate that you would single somebody out and call them a liar, John. The, the guy really is an honorable guy. And I think you take advantage of somebody who's not present. It would have been better- Okay, who else?
I agree with John, though, it's hot.
Anybody else?
Steve Mallahan, 2202 Canton Road. Dean, you're talking about the people using this trail, all having cell phones, and they're gonna catch anything wrong happening. So you're gonna rely on the public to maintain the policing of this? Now, when you come into my house a couple of weeks ago and said about getting that lock off that gate, the gate's been opened, two four-wheelers back there, coming up through there. I don't know where they come from, Lake Moore somewhere. And then you got the people at Lake James at the end of the street shooting bullets over your head. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We, we appreciate people attending, so that we can hear how people feel. We're gonna get into the business agenda if, if nobody else has anything they wanna say at this point. I, I'll say to you that we're not ready to open the place up.
I have one question about-
Yes.
Followed about those gunshots. Where are all those gunshots coming from?
Good, that's a good question.
Because, you know, where we live, we live in a condo across from Springfield High School. And, and you can hear it on a regular basis. And it's just strange, I didn't think you were allowed to do that.
Right now, the, the regulations that apply to Springfield Township are the county regulations. And unfortunately, the county regulations are not strong enough. And I, for one, think that we need to strengthen the, the regulations that, that the, you know, pretending that this is a wide-open country is wrong because of the safety issues. Basically, the, the, the regulations forbid discharging a firearm within 300 feet of the residence of another. But the problem is, the county regulation has an exception for target practice. So in my opinion, that's no regulation.
So if you're target practicing, you don't have to be 300 feet?
You can be 10 foot from your neighbor's house.
Oh, okay.
And, and that's wrong. That's wrong.
You don't be talking about that.
No, I said it is wrong.
No, he thinks it's wrong, but it's not against regulations.
Yeah.
It's up for reelection, that's who you're talking to.
It is wrong. It, it, it's wrong. It should, it should be that, that, in, in my opinion, it should be no closer than 900 feet of the residence of another person for any purpose. And, and the, the wide-open use of gun, I'm not against guns. I own a couple. But, you know, if people were more respectful of the rights of other people, it wouldn't be a problem to, to have a situation where you can invite people in from, don't even reside in the area, and you have an afternoon spent discharging firearms without regard to the, the quiet of your neighbor's property is wrong. And I'd like to see us change that. Besides the fact that there's a safety issue. That there's too often that people who, who have lack of regard for others put other people in, in harm's way. We've had, we've had people come to this meeting, just as we've had a meeting tonight, to complain about being in their backyard and having bullets whizzing through. The complaints about the discharge of firearms are very frequent. And I, and for, for my part, I think that, that we oughta change that. And I, I hope to commit some time to trying to do that.
I think you'd make a lot of people much happier changing the gun laws instead of putting this damn trail up.
I, I'll give that a lot of thought. I, I can't, I can't make everybody happy.
I know you said you're not ready to open it yet. Do you have a title, or do you have a plan?
Not yet. Not yet. But I mean, we already, like I say, if you wanna see what we did this year, it's, you go to Waterworks Park from Sanitarium going north, you'll see what we, what we did there. I, I mean, for my part, I think the priority is to go from there and try to connect to the lakefront. And, you know, if we could, if we could solve that problem first.
Yeah, my question was, how would you cross Canton Road if it gets involved?
I, I mean, I don't know how you would do that.
You don't have the time to answer that.
Yeah, that's, that would be pretty serious expenditure, and-
Don't think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and buy me out. Take my driveway, let it sit in the bog. And that would save all these people headaches. I'd get out of the township out of your hair. And it wouldn't be that nice, cuz if you have to build a bridge, you don't want to use it.
That might be a good deal.
That, that might be a good deal.
I thought you might, you could put a cussers down, nice cussers down, Canton Road. Pick the Gary around the pond, I've got the pick the Gary everywhere, so I can sit. And that'd get me out of your hair.
You, you think we could work out a price?
Sure, we could.
Okay.
If I gotta put a fence up on my front yard, would you go pay for it?
Well, I, I, I mean, that would be, it would be a private property issue. I mean, we, we talked years ago, I think, when I had a parks director, we actually talked to Kern's about that, making that kind of concession where they had inventory that, that it's appropriate to, to have some barrier. But I think before we, before we get excited about this, we gotta, we've gotta get a plan together, and we don't have that yet.
It's 50 foot from my cross porch, and it opens up right there. That's where it opens up.
But I know, Ronald, that has always been there, though. You know that.
It was a power line, not a trail.
Yeah.
And I, I had to pay you money to cross it, to buy an easement off Ohio Edison.
It, it was a trail. My dad told me that people used to come on the trolley car, get off, walk across the road, and come over and pick huckleberries.
That's when I was a red rug, when it was a one-hand rug.
Yeah. And, I mean, that, the unfortunate thing is, you can't, you can't believe that the world will always be the way it is now. That's a, the, the only thing that's constant in life is change.
So you're not gonna pay the government, protect the fence, keep it out of my yard?
I, I don't wanna say yes, I don't wanna say no.
Is there gonna be a vote on this? For the township to vote on it?
I don't, I don't think that- I don't think we're ready to make a, a specific plan or announcement.
Is there gonna be a vote from the township to vote on it?
I would say that the trustees have the responsibility to make the decision.
Who's gonna be looking here at all the properties and protecting them? Our properties from the climate, so it's gonna bring into our area. And that's really, well, all three years we've lived here, I've been there 35 years. How are you gonna protect us from, from people coming through the properties that we built this trail next to a 50 mile highway? It's really, when all our mailboxes take out multiple times. I don't really see any plans other than for walking.
Yeah, you can say that.
Mainly protection for, for your residents who've been here a very long time.
Well, I, I guess I've tried to say tonight, I disagree with the basic premise that if you improve and you open it up and you, you encourage families to start using it, that, that, that that increases crime. I don't believe it.
But the way you're moving this path is, is next to a highway, basically. It's not a, a really wonderful-looking landscape like other parks are. This is not a park, this is a friggin' highway, there's no law in this.
Yeah, I, I would have to look at the area that you're talking about, but-
I live right across the street from you.
Okay.
Right across.
Oh, you guys have been in each other's towns, right?
Yeah. The, look, let's take an example of a trail near a busy road. The Lakefront Trail goes along 224. I can't think of a busier road in our community than 224.
There's a lake there, I'm talking through the highway.
No, but I, I'm talking about that the trail is next to the highway. Or the trail, the Lakefront Trail goes down along 224. If you cross, if you pass the, the lake and you cross Canfield Road, the trail angles and then goes along 224. It's, in terms of the distance from the moving traffic, it's approximately 20 feet, 25 feet?
Yeah, we also have a police department right here.
But we're not talking about, we're, we're, he's talking about-
You know where you live, Dean, and where we live, that is, that's not the same situation. You're a lot more distance away, and there is nothing that's gonna take people down there other than crime.
Yeah, I, I just disagree with you. The, the difference is whether or not it, it's an open and frequently-used trail, or it's, it's closed off. Right now, it's closed off. I think that you're more likely to have a problem with people sneaking around when there are not other people around.
I don't think most of the trail, we, the rest of us, we don't know if we live in here knowing what, what we're planning. I, I wouldn't like the use. I, I mean, I think most of us like this area because of the rural scenery and the clients.
Yeah.
And you're changing that. And, and these people that have lived here a very long time in this community, I think that's pretty short-sighted on, on yourself and your group to really think this is something that will pass and do. I think it's very naive. You live very far off the road. You don't have nothing to worry about. The rest of us do. And I don't think that the use force is gonna be able to resolve that issue.
Okay, and, and anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Is there a majority of the residents that want this? Or is it just?
That-
I, I haven't talked to many people that really, they can't keep it local. That, that's, that's the answer I get when we have to be talking about it. What you really need is a trail from Springfield High School for those kids to walk along Sanitarium Road after school. That, that is so beautiful. You need, you need sidewalks more than you need a trail going over to the road.
Okay.
That's true. So the kids are walking down to the side, and I, it go 20 miles an hour, but sometimes you almost have to stop because there's so many kids walking that you can't keep traffic going. Every time I go through there, I think, I'm gonna go do a mission for that. Here I am.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Instead of spending money on going way over to the bog by Canton Road and crossing Canton Road, put the sidewalks on for the kids to be safe. And I know it doesn't sound good to you, but if you were a parent that had a child walking there, you would be worried, so.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm just really confused, because I'm on this board, and we haven't even talked about opening the trail there. Like, there's an overall grand plan, but I can tell you right now, someone else is gonna vote on it for me, cuz I've been doing this for a long time. It ain't gonna happen in the three years I have left on this board. So you guys are getting all worked up. I mean, we have a trail coming from the high school that comes all the way to the lake here. That's what we're working on trying to finish for, that very reason what you said, so the school kids can walk after school. It cuts through Lake Moore. Like Mr. Young said, we finished it from Sanitarium coming north through Waterworks Park behind the plaza, it comes, we have a couple of issues that we're trying to resolve to get it connected to here. And then we're gonna clear it, finishing the rest of the way to the high school. I mean, what you're saying-
So you're saying we're gonna do it?
We're gonna do it, yeah. But not, not the tr- not the trolley car track. Like, we're gonna do what you're suggesting. Like, I, and we've been working on that. Like, and we've been working on that, this other part. This, I mean, I don't know why...
Dean is why we are here. He came up there. He took his tractor back there and brought it home. Who told him to do that?
See, they're damn farmers, huh? Yeah.
Don't be putting that harm.
As long as you stay away from my house, I don't care what happens, it's okay.
We're ready.
No, I'm kidding.
You just wanna fix Ain't Road, right?
Yeah, just, we gotta fix Ain't Road, that's terrible.
Okay, anybody else?
Are they gonna be able to ride a bike on the bog? Or is this gonna stay walking there?
Well, I don't, we don't control the bog. It's a Metro Parks. We encouraged it. Because it added, I mean, look at that. You pay taxes already to Metro Parks. You gotta, you gotta park in Springfield on their dime.
Are you mentioning to put the path into Metro Pet? Once the Metro Park is gonna exit, the signed papers, what is it, 20 years? When that's up, does it go to somebody else who'll tax and will go out and maintain?
I think you're getting way ahead of yourself here.
Time flies, that one was said in this whole process.
Okay, we do want to get on to other business, and the trail is not on the agenda.
But we're all here because of you, Dean.
Well, thank you.
There's a football game on.
I do appreciate being thought of. The thing is that the easement, the easement exists in favor of the township. I was simply out there inspecting the easement to see... Yeah, with the brush hog. Because the one area, it was a little bit thick beyond Steve's gate. So, that's why I came with the tractor, and I wanted to see what... And really, the area through there is beautiful. It's beautiful.
Do I need to stay or not?
Okay. Actually, I thank you all for coming.
The next meeting on this will be at Dean's house, you guys.
Then you get the bigger house. Or the barn, we can go to the barn.
The barn, we can go to the barn, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna jump into some other business. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to...
Yeah, we appreciate if you stay, these meetings are usually very interesting.
We can take answers.
Oh, okay. You wanna do the... Okay. You wanna handle it first, and I think it's appropriate on... Yeah, the first admin. I'll do that. Okay, first of all, to start, I am gonna move that we dispense with the reading of minutes and approve minutes to date.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
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 Secondly, I move to approve payment of bills and payroll as prepared by our fiscal officer, Mr. Spickert, and subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
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 And Mrs. Chapman, you have a couple of administrative matters.
I move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing expenditures from American Rescue Plan Act funds for the replacement of the township boiler with a new peerless surefire boiler in amount not to exceed $24,000 and paid to Choice Air.
You wanna comment on it, Mr. Whitechamp?
This is one of our backup boilers. I think we talked about it earlier in the year. It keeps our system for us. There'd be a second boiler, which actually we're gonna put online, to be primary boiler and replace an old one that's 20 years old. So it makes our system redundant.
Okay, I'm gonna second it.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing expenditures from American Rescue Plan Act funds for the renovation of the Lakefront Center in the amount not to exceed $59,833 and paid to Integrity Contracting Services Incorporated.
Do you wanna give any description or comment on it?
We just wanna update it. We're gonna put a fireplace in, new lighting, new flooring. It just needs a lot of updating, because it's a beautiful facility. We wanna be able to utilize it more for events.
I talked to you before about the seniors center.
Yes.
And my daughter passed away that year, so I couldn't work on the seniors center. The lady whose husband donated that, that's a senior center. Not as a moneymaker or a rental. And I'm afraid that if her family comes, there might be trouble.
You know, we wanted to...
The seniors center is disintegrated. We don't have any meetings or anything that seniors need to know today. Medicare, I'm going hard for them about. Taxes, you go someplace else, all comes to Green. They have a whole list of things. Every week, you go up here, they have how many for their dinner? 10, 15? One Foltz with you, that's when the seniors center stop, and that's when the recreation parks are. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have gotten...
No, we wanna hear what you have to say.
But this one was very put out when I brought her up here, and the sign had been changed. But her husband's flat, she won't invite it. I think she asked you about it, that we came to talk before one of these meetings.
You're talking about Mrs. Essler, or...
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I don't think the Esslers donated that property. I know that in years past, that one of the trustees, Mr. Essler, had been instrumental in wanting to promote programs for seniors. And that was... That was at a day and age when, if you were 55, you were a senior. I think really, our view is we want the center to be available to all ages and to encourage all ages, including seniors. I don't know if the...
I think the seniors have been put out completely. There's no program that I would be interested in. I don't play bingo. I don't play cards, well, I play cards, but there's two tingles up there. There's no social, like, for any of the seniors to complicate. They used to have a Christmas party, Halloween party, birthday parties once a month.
Who organized that? Who used to... Who used to organize that?
They had a wonderful senior group. We had trips that went all over, day trips.
I know, where are they?
No, I don't remember.
We've not, I mean, in the time I've been on the board, we haven't done anything to discourage senior groups.
No, but you haven't done anything to encourage. That's the whole thing.
We have a full-time employee up there that...
She doesn't want me to bother. She opens up for the meals, you be there at 4:00. You eat your meal, you're out of there by 5:00. I mean, these people, some of these people used to go up there, we'd fill it. And in the beginning, we could take dominos and play dominos while we're waiting, we could go a little... You don't do that now.
She won't let you do that?
Well, I haven't gone this year, and I haven't gone last year because there was nobody there. I used to get the whole carload of people, we'd all go up for my love.
Why'd you quit going?
Well, because they, everything stopped.
What stopped?
It was COVID, really.
We haven't stopped anything.
No.
We haven't done anything different than we have. So that's what I guess we're asking you, was there a group that organized it? Okay.
Okay, and I was gonna take that on, but that was like, what, four years ago? Because my daughter died, then we've had three years, or two years, while you're COVID. And now I think, you know, maybe I'm past the point of organizing anymore. But sure, sure. I mean, think about it, you've got all these senior citizens in all these new condos. We go to Green.
When you say all these senior citizens in condos, which condo...
Redneap Point.
Okay.
We're in Lake More.
Okay. Do they have a senior center in Lake More?
No, but I'm gonna go over there if you guys don't wanna do it.
They have a... Do they have like a community room or a rec... So why don't those seniors get together and plan something up at our center? In other words...
Do you think kids would like that?
She would be, if that's a problem, she would be instructed to like it. I mean, if you understand.
Yeah, that's her job, to keep people up there.
But what I'm telling you is, you don't go early for your dinner. You can't go, maybe have a little appointment and it's early.
Why not?
But why can't you? That's what I guess we're asking.
I don't know, she doesn't...
Well, you know, she works for us. Like, if you bring these things to us, we can...
And at 5:00, the place is empty, you're out.
Does she tell you that?
Well, she wants out there by 5:00. But what I can understand is who takes care of all these rentals and all parties that go on?
Kitty.
We used to have people come from all over and do speeches about insurances, taxes.
Well, these are things that we need to know. I mean, by utilizing that...
But I talked with these people before, and I said, why don't you organize it? Well, now it's four years later, and I'm sorry.
See, we've been waiting for you to do it, but, I mean, now we're gonna have to move on to someone else.
Where are these people that were in the group?
Did you have a workperson at one time?
We did.
Before Foltz?
Before Folt Dinkins. Bobby Dinkins?
No, there was Bobby, and then there was Mr. Foltz.
And when Foltz came, it stopped. And he put all that senior citizen equipment outside, and all the kids have it broken all the time. I mean, that was really smart. He could've put it in the senior center or the farmer somewhere, back in that little... Maybe somebody would've walked it through and...
I don't...
No, Bobby got the...
Oh.
Yeah, Bobby was here when the equipment was put in.
Well, I mean, we didn't, I don't know that there's any reason that seniors can't get together and use the center. We want it to be used by seniors, by young people. What's that?
Well, we were talking about having like a community hours, certain hours throughout the week during the day. Anybody could go up and utilize that.
Okay, this is what I was gonna have. Green is open from 9:00 till 6:00.
Okay.
You can walk in, if you're always in Google Ads, you don't play cards, or if you wanna organize something, you can do it. They have programs for the whole week.
So during the week, then?
During the whole week. And they usually have a day trip planned, maybe once or twice a month. I don't think I'm up to that.
Right, I mean, they have someone that's organizing that. Whether it's an employee or, you know, an outside citizen resident. But we're not saying we're against it. And we wanna remodel it so it's more inviting. Like, right now, you go in there, it looks like an institution. Like, I don't know who would want to go in that place.
Maybe we need to open a position and advertise that we need...
A volunteer?
Volunteers to help with the seniors center. They had some money collected for, you know, if you plan a bus trip, you have to put so much money on. And they charged for, they just had a king on. If you got coffee, if you wanted to put some money, they did. And there was some dispute about that money. I still don't know what it was.
Where, at our senior center?
And they closed it. I don't know what they did with some money, I don't know. And at this point, some of those ladies probably don't remember either. But it's sad, that this whole community with all these seniors. And now, I mean, not just our place, there's a lot of seniors in the Springfield Township.
Did it happen once Kelly got elected? Did it happen once Kelly got elected? Is that what it was?
I apologize if it did, because I didn't do it.
No, I'm just, I'm kidding, but it's, I mean, we don't, if we don't hear about this stuff, I mean, we didn't stop anything that was going on there. Trust me, I've wanted to. So, I mean, they won't let me, so it's all right. But, yeah, we haven't stopped anything.
The sidewalk and the, you brought it up, the seniors center, those were my two pet peeves right now. But it's dangerous because...
Well...
When it's snowing, and those kids are trying to walk off.
No, we understand that, and we are working on, I mean, it's...
I don't mean a trail, I mean a sidewalk.
No, yeah, no, I know. Yeah. We're trying to provide a safer place for them to walk, to get around.
People to purchase the homes and condos that are in season. Well, you know, there's more and more seniors now than there ever was. It would probably be an attraction they have of those seniors.
I'd like to have a place, I have one that lives with me, I'd like to drop her off someplace for like five hours a day, you know, and then go, that'd be good. Yeah, I should have her organize it, so that way it gives her something to do, yeah.
That's it. I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, we wanna hear from you. We do.
I hear from Springfield Township, we're here from Springfield Township.
Oh, the women's club. I'm looking forward to your craft show.
I mean...
Oh, me too.
The women's club has been a real supporter of the township. And, you know, we want you to continue to support. And if you wanna take the initiative to plan particular programs up there, it's great. The proposal that my colleagues have made here is to try to update that building so that it's more attractive to everybody. We have the most beautiful venue looking out over the lake. And when we bring people into that center, we have a chance to have them look at one of the best views in this area and to say, wow, this is Springfield. We need more of that. Where somebody has a positive. We have our, we certainly have our problems that we struggle with. But one of the things that when we can bring people down to the lakefront, it puts a, it puts a, what I call an upscale view, like Springfield's going somewhere along with the rest of the world. And so I'm supportive of what they're proposing, and I give them credit for working on it.
And it's not that we're trying to make money, we're just trying to make enough to maintain it and to keep it going, so it's not a drain. And we don't have a prob, I think you're, like, opening it up, we talked about...
Yeah, I mean, we will make it more accessible after this remodel. I mean, more than what you're telling us now, we didn't know, because we haven't stopped any programs. Like, the rentals are at night, and on the weekends, the, all the daytime programs that were there, as far as we know, could still take place. I mean, I understand, I'm not calling you a liar, I understand that they're not going on, but we didn't tell any, we didn't instruct anyone to stop them.
Why did they stop selling hamburgers and hot dogs at their concerts?
Well, it's a health department violation, for one, to bring them out in a roaster and just sit them out there all evening. And, yeah, and it was... Well, we had the food trucks with hot dogs.
They say they're inexpensive.
Oh, okay.
Right, I think they love the price on them, yeah. I mean, you can't, I don't know if we could even sell a hot dog for a dollar nowadays.
What'd you sell for when you cooked them?
When I cooked them, $3.
Well, I just wondered.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, because the bands cost us $1,000 every Friday, so we just try to recoup some money by the, you know, the food trucks come in, and we are busy doing other...
I mean, I think we have to remember, too, it's a free concert, like, we're not charging you to come to the concert, but we're paying, the bands aren't free.
And you could bring them, you could bring, you could bring a lunch or what, you know, we don't, we don't mind.
Yeah, you can bring, we don't like stop you from bringing your own stuff.
No, we were making money for the club.
Oh, you were selling the hot dogs for the club?
We had candy, chips.
See, I wasn't aware of that.
Like, we don't know anything about that.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, she don't tell you anything, I guess that kid. She just isn't tired.
Oh, Kitty got the money?
I don't know.
Yeah, I thought so.
Man, we're gonna have to do a little investigation.
She had, she gave us the orders when we went there, to, you know, this is what you do, this is how you sell it, this is when you get done, this is when you pack it up, and you leave the money right there. And she took it.
So did you cook the hot dogs and bring them up, or...
She pre-cooked everything.
So she cooked it, you sold it, and you got the profit for the women's club? Or you got...
No, Kitty got the money.
Oh, so... Oh, so... You just volunteered.
Well, we have something even better now, you could volunteer to sell beer. You guys come down there, and it gets a little crazy sometimes, yeah? Beer and wine. And do some dancing, see how we can get...
Well, and we hope to open the restaurant up there and have food out of there. Or the, the community center, we hope to make it a restaurant a couple nights a month.
Yeah.
We can come and have dinner.
Just have dinner a few nights, like, for everyone, not the 4:00 to 4:30.
No, it'll be...
Where?
What time do you plan?
What time would you like to eat? Before dark, okay, we'll get it.
Well, that would help.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's just there now.
Well, that's what we want to do, we want to open it up and create awareness, especially once we do the work. We want people to feel welcome, everyone to feel welcome.
Open it up, that people can walk in, get a book, or a magazine, or play cards, and not go on Tuesday with two tables, and you're all playing, and if you want to play something else, okay.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I've gone up there a couple times, and I don't feel welcome up there. I feel like it's a little click and you can't come in.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad...
That's all right.
No, I'm glad you came.
No, we need to know these things, we do.
Well, let's see where we can do, I'm glad to help, I'll be glad to call, I'll be glad to do whatever.
Well, as we get closer to, the remodeling is going to start at the end of October, and as we get closer to reopening for the first of the year, I would love to sit down with you ladies and have some ideas spread around, because it is community.
Would it be all right with everybody if we continued this meeting?
Well, I think this is good.
Okay, on the item before us...
We had to hear about that trail that you caused all the problems on, so...
Is there, is there, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay.
What are we doing?
Your motion.
Passing your motion.
Okay.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I move to approve the purchase of two Extreme X 440 Port P O E switches from Chai Corporation for $7,264 to replace the current failing switches to be taken from Fund Line 1,000-323-0931. This is out of necessity to update our server, computer server system, that is quite outdated.
Yes, this is a part of our main system in there.
Yeah.
This here's, these switches are kind of the lifeline.
To keep, to keep it operating.
Phones, internet, everything. And we have one that's failing, and we're a little bit undersized, so we're doing an update at the same time while we're making a replacement.
Okay, that's a motion, any second?
Second.
Okay.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Next, I move to approve the reallocation of appropriation of funds per the attached Exhibit A for proper documentation of expenditures. This is still all within our budget, but required to shift a couple of categories. Okay, I move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Next, I move to certify the total cost for the abatement of the following properties on Exhibit B, and to instruct the fiscal officer to forward to Summit County Auditor the report of township action regarding abatement for the total cost to be placed upon the tax duplicate as a lien upon the land. Those are listed properties that we've had to clean up, correct?
Mowings, board ups, tear downs, demos, yes.
And so, we are certifying the cost of that dealing with maintenance properties to the taxes for those properties?
Second.
Okay. Is there a second?
I did, I said...
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro, you have some matters for our safety department.
Yes, I move to approve the purchase from Alantech Online Employee Scheduling and Workforce Management software for a total purchase of $3,284. This is for the fire department from Fund Line 2,281-760-790.
I second that motion.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes. I move to authorize the promotion appointment of Matthew Carr and Shaq Farrington to the position of full-time medic effective October 31, 2022, contingent on the satisfactory completion of the physical examination required by the Ohio Police and Fire Disability Pension Fund, including the satisfactory completion of a drug screening as well. The appointment will follow the terms and conditions of employment as outlined in the current full-time firefighters collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
I assume we'll be advised if they satisfactory meet those two requirements? Will we have the honor of swearing them in?
Yes.
Just a question.
We would like to see them sworn in, plus the firemen that have not been sworn in.
Okay.
Correct.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes. I move to authorize the promotional appointment of Colin Wilson to the position of full-time medic trainee effective October 31, 2022, contingent upon the satisfactory completion of the physical examination required by the Ohio Police and Fire Disability Pension Fund, including the satisfactory completion of a drug screening as well. The appointment will follow the terms and conditions of the employment as outlined in the current full-time firefighter collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes. And I move to approve the payment to SwissCOG in the amount of $88,333.89 for our fourth quarter 2022 dispatching fees. This will be split between Fund 2,081-210-360-1017 in the amount of $53.33 and Fund 2,281-230-360-1017 in the amount of $35,333.56.
It's split because it's dispatched for both police and for the fire department?
Correct.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Are there other matters to come before the board? Are there members of the board that have any announcements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Spectrum Community Channel 1023, serving the communities of Springfield and Lake More. People can tune into Community Channel 1023 and find the days and times programs run, or you can also take a look at the beautiful and informative website at www.springfieldtownship.us. Currently, the Springfield Township Car Show by the Lake, as well as Dance Fever, the concert on the lake. As always, the recent community governments' meetings are running on the channel as well. Don't forget to follow them on Facebook, Channel 1023, and the new Channel 1023 blog. Again, this is your community channel, if there's something you'd like for them to cover, please let us know. Again, the Friday night concert, Dance Fever, from August 19, the Car Show by the Lake on September 18, the Springfield Board of Education meeting on September 20, the trustees meeting on September 22, and the Lake More Council meeting on October 3 are currently running for your viewing pleasure.
Thank you. Any announcement, Mrs. Chapman? Okay.
Yes, I have an announcement as well. We should be aware that Halloween is going to be celebrated on Saturday, October 29, from 5:00 to 7:00. So, that is the current schedule. And then also, I think we've already been talking about, is it Friday or Saturday? I get that mixed up.
It is Friday.
Can I see the calendar?
The tree lighting?
Yeah, the tree lighting.
You got to turn it to October.
December the 2nd, which will be Friday, December the 2nd.
You can tear off September.
And we're shooting the...
So, the 29th is Saturday?
Correct.
Okay.
Shooting for the unveiling of all the remodeling to be done in time for the tree lighting. So, Santa will be sitting up there in the community center by the new fireplace, which will be nice and warm and cozy for our seniors.
We'll have a child.
You'll beat it, all right.
That's all I had.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you. If anybody has anything else, we're here, otherwise, I'm going to count to 10 and then move to adjourns. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Deloro?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.